Let's call this regular meeting of the Board of Mifflin County Commissioners to order on August 16th. We'll start with an invocation from Commissioner Dunkel. Let us pray. Lord, we gather here today to do the business of the people. We ask you bless this deliberation and guide us to make decisions in the best interests of those we represent. The dog days of summer are upon us, and we thank you for this beautiful August day. August is a month of diverse history and cultural events, from the jailing of Nelson Mandela in South Africa to the surrender of the Japanese concluding World War II. As we finish this month, vacations will come to an end, and schools throughout America will reopen. Lord, we ask that you provide safety to the American students, faculty, school support personnel, and the men and women in public safety and law enforcement. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 2nd?
So moved.
I see it's going to be one of those. I will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You can only vote once, so motion passes. Prove the bills. Go ahead.
If you'll excuse this interruption, I'm ready to have Kevin back.
Only got to number four. As you can see, Commissioner Nakotis is vacant. He will be arriving back, I think, today or tomorrow. Right? He's on a well-deserved vacation. Accounts payable. Accounts payable, checks totaling $1,548,641.31. Our payroll account totals $340,901.93. In the 911 account, we have 12 checks and eight EFTs totaling $22,894.67. One check in LEPC for $134.81. Liquid fuels has two checks totaling $26,361.19. CDVG account has three checks for $84,564.10. CDVG home account has two checks for $9,820. And finally, the ACT 137 account has one check for $21. And I will make the motion to pay the bills.
And I will second it.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Treasurers report. Treasurer Sivitz.
Our beginning balance was $159,012.84. We had deposits of $1,627,440.79. We transferred $500,000 from Capital Reserve. We agree with the reading of the bills by Commissioner Postle, leaving us an ending balance of $397,283.86. Our liquid fuels has $276,728.7. Our ACT 89 has $222,816.63. Our 911 has $2,472,680.26. Our LEPC has $19,688.47. Our local use fund has $78,161.91. Our Capital Reserve has $9,638,900.29. And our state credit home deposit has $3 million. And it's also for charity.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Meetings in advance. What have you been up to, Commissioner Dunkel?
Well, I'll share with you if you share with me. Okay. A number of things have happened since we met two weeks ago. We had a department head meeting following our normal business meeting. Rob and I attended the county commissioner conference. This year, there were a number of very informative breakout sessions covering everything from elections to veterans to civil service reform, among others. Airport authority meeting. Rob and I visited the new location for the drop-in center for individuals with disabilities. We met with several different department heads. And yesterday, I visited the Roethrock Community Library where I met with Debbie Hines to take a look at the new children's room that they are in the process of developing and will have set up shortly, as well as to purchase new books. So that concludes my report. Mr. Chen.
Okay. Thank you. And I have also attended various department head meetings and internal meetings together with Commissioner Dunkel. Also, the CCAP conference in Gettysburg where I am on the Community and Economic Development Subcommittee where we discussed collaboration with other agencies and associations such as the Pennsylvania Economic Development Association for economic development purposes. We had an Operation Fairness meeting. We had a, I had a Sidacog Joint Rail Authority meeting where it was reported that the project in the West Park Railroad, that's the railroad spur that goes past Marlette into Greenbrier, has been upgraded. And there is going to be a project by the rail authorities starting on the 20th in Lewestown Borough. I think it's improvements on the crossings in Chestnut Street in that area. We attended, I think it's Chestnut Street and Pine Street.
I would've checked. Go ahead and tell Chestnut.
Well, it's going to be a detour for about four days until that is completed. Attended the youth fair. I attended Lewestown Borough Council meeting, talked about a CDVG project, United Way Board of Directors meeting, DLI Executive Committee meeting. And Commissioner Dunkel and I also attended the open house for the new skills drop-in center in Lewestown. That was yesterday. Okay. Public comment. Before we get to our guests, is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, let's go to Mr. Tom Worsler. You're first, Regional Representative from Department of Labor and Industries, Rapid Response.
So I only have an hour. Is that what you said? All right. You guys want to be out of here by noon or something?
I'd like to. Three presenters.
I was going to tend to go over this PowerPoint. I'll give it to you, but I'm gonna, after talking to Rob this morning, Mr. Postle this morning, I decided I'm gonna kind of go a different route. But you'll have this information anyway on the program, but I think it's easier to go through the program just by quick case, okay? It'll give you an idea of who I am and what I do. I'm Tom Worsler. I'm with Rapid Response, Pennsylvania Labor and Industry. We're from the state, and we're here to help. It's kind of a unique program with the state. Just gonna give you, like Rob and I talked about, GE. When GE decided they were going to close down, I received, where do you want me to go? I'm gonna go over here. I'm gonna hide in corn. Okay, is that right?
Yeah, right by the door.
Right by the door. All right. Okay, so they throw things. When GE decided they were going to close down, an email went out from the Career Link to me, and Rob's name was actually on that email, and it said they were closing. So what I do is whenever there's a layoff or a closure, I meet with the company, talk to them about their employees, get the demographics, who they are, what do they do, how much do they make, what are their skill sets, and then I provide them a meeting. Before that meeting ever happens, I work with the company, and when I say work with the company, that sometime is an issue. And Rob was very helpful when it came to getting some contact information of who to talk to in that company. I don't live here. I live in Potter County, you know, Potter County where there's more camps than there are people. All right? I'm attached to the Harrisburg office. I don't go to Harrisburg. I try to avoid that place at all costs. But I got ahold of, I actually spoke to Mr. Postle, and he said, hey, here's some names, here's some contacts, try these. So I did, and I contacted somebody from the company, the plant manager, I believe, at the time. And GE, the corporate itself, wasn't real. They weren't real happy to work with us. They really didn't want to, okay? But the locals did. So what we did was we scheduled some meetings right up there at the plant. When I say "we," I mean the Career Link is involved, they are an intricate partner, unemployment compensation, because how many of you have filed unemployment, let's say, in the last year? It is a daunting task now. It's not like it used to be, okay? You have to do work searches, you have to be registered with the Career Link system. There's probably two things you didn't know at all, all right? Those people didn't know either. So what we do is bring in the unemployment representative. They do about half the meeting. It's an hour and a half meeting, like today, it'll be about an hour and a half. We do an hour and a half meeting. Half of it is unemployment compensation, how to file, what to do, what not to do, all that type of thing. The other 45 minutes are different presenters. We contacted the Social Security Office here. They came, did a presentation, because when we did that sit-down with the company, find out about the employees, we found out there was a large number of them that were going to be eligible or were eligible for retirement. So we brought in Social Security, and they explained to them how to go about setting up that, Social Security. Gave them a lot of good information. And then, I'm sort of a jack-of-all-trades. Anybody that doesn't come to the meeting, then I try to cover, okay? Consumer credit counseling, or advantage credit counseling, as they're called now. Go over information on their finances, budgeting, what to do, what not to do there, you know, who to contact if you have problems with your mortgage. Prescription assistance programs. Bring someone from healthcare. I brought in a healthcare navigator from Harrisburg who came and explained the Affordable Care Act, and also spousal coverage in CHIP, COBRA, and all the options are available there. That's just a few of the things that we do at a meeting. We give these people a big packet of information. Here's where you go to file unemployment. Here's where you go to get your healthcare. Here's where you go if you need help paying a light bill, all right? All that information in one package. We understand they're not going to use all that information, but everybody has different needs. So we give them all that information. We hold that meeting for an hour and a half, just explain everything you should do when you get laid off. Now GE, as you probably know, a lot of their work went overseas. Okay, that's why they closed. Therefore, they were eligible for the trade adjustment assistance, which means that those people were eligible to get free training through that federal program. But first, they had to file. So we filed a petition. I believe it was the company that actually filed the petition. They filed the petition, they became eligible for trade, and then those people were able to get schooling, they were able to get extended unemployment benefits. They're really not extended unemployment benefits. Sometimes you've heard about a place closing and people have gotten unemployment for two years. That really is not happening, okay? It's a trade benefit, TRA. Looks like unemployment, smells like unemployment. It's based on your unemployment, but it is not unemployment, it's a federal benefit. So they were able to use that money, that extra unemployment per se, while they went to school. So they didn't have to worry about paying their light bill while they were going to school. They continued on with their unemployment. And then, some of those were able to take other jobs. There's a reemployment trade adjustment assistance, which helps people who are 50 or older to transition into another job. If, say, they were making $20 an hour there at the plant, then they could go to another job that makes $10 an hour, and they will pay 50% of the difference. So those people would be making $15 an hour. And that's good for $10,000, two years, whichever comes first. So that, maybe they were only a year or two, you know, a year or two away from retirement. So that program, instead of going to school, they're able to just get into another job, finish it out, then go on, okay? So that was a really great program. Not all companies are eligible, only companies that, you know, are affected due to foreign imports. Then, as part of that, since it was such a large dislocation, 130, 160, somewhere around there, then we decided we would have what we called a dislocated worker transition team. What that is, is it's a group of people that worked at the plant who would come once a month to a meeting and discuss what's going on, okay? Because when these plants close and these businesses close, then sometimes these people, it's like a family, you know, when you're working at these companies. But then, when it's over, they don't know what to do, okay? All these people that they worked with, talked with, are going. So we formed this team made up of the workers with an impartial chair. I was the impartial chair from Rapid Response because, you know, there's nothing there that I have any control over that. I just try to keep them focused. Sometimes quite the issue is keeping people focused in a meeting. But it's more of a support group for those. And then, you know, the state does nothing without, you know, wanting something. So we decided at the meeting, what we do is we track, where did those people go to? Where are they? Are they getting jobs? I'm pleased to announce, we disbanded that group just last month, okay? 73% of those people from GE are either now working a new job, they're either retired or they are in school. So that's a pretty good number, you know? 73% is a pretty good number. We still work with the other, the Career Link, they'll still work with the other 27%, you know, see what they can do. But some of those 27%, you can't find. They moved on, they moved out of country, wherever they went. But that's sort of the process of Rapid Response. What we do is, like I said, plant closes, lays off, and I say that, you know, 120, 130, 160 people. I've done Rapid Responses, meetings like that, with as few as two people. I don't like to do two people. That's kind of a, you know, it's not very cost-effective. But the reason sometimes that I only do two people is maybe I have 10 or 15 that are getting laid off, and I hold a meeting, and only two people show up. But I hold that meeting, all right? I will hold a meeting. If there's a company that lays off and they only lay off 10 people, then you can give me a call, okay? You can give the commissioners a call, you can give Rob a call, I'm sure I can say that, and they'll put you in touch with me, okay? You got 10 people that lay off from a company? Or you can just go online, Rapid Response. My contact information will pop right up if you just put in Rapid Response. That's me for this region. I cover 13, 16, I don't know, something like that, counties, not really sure. Page 20 in the manual, I handed out manuals to the commissioners. I'd like to hand one out to everybody, but of course, the state only gives us so many. So you guys were the privilege today to get one of those. But on page 20 is my contact information, but there is contact information for the entire state in there. But we try also, you know, when I say we do these meetings, we also do layoff aversion, turn stuff over to SEON, the Steel Valley Authority, or the Governor's Action Team to try to save these jobs. It's nice to see you people here today, but I hope I never see any of you again, okay? That's really the goal, is not to be the guy that's there when everyone gets laid off. All right, any questions?
Mr. Worsler's like that, like an oncologist, you know, a doctor you don't necessarily want to meet, but sometimes necessary. And luckily, not all that, hasn't been all that many meetings, I guess, in Mifflin County. I know General Electric was the last one, but big layoffs are also some. The plant doesn't need to close.
Right. Just layoffs. We did bonhomie recently.
I was gonna ask you about that, thank you. So you were brought in for bonhomie. Any else for Tom? Thank you. He did refer to my previous career. I did have some fun in that, but I'm running to work now, Tom.
Tom, how do you decide? Who decides and how do they decide whether or not the trade adjustment assistance requirement would come into play?
Well, Pennsylvania's number two behind California in filing trade petitions. If I think there is a thread of hope of people receiving trade adjustment assistance, I will file. Some years back, they didn't allow us as Rapid Response to file a petition on behalf of the workers, but they do now, and that has increased the numbers because...
The company would help you, because the company should be crying about that anyway.
You would think.
You would think, yeah. More people pushing us out, that's why I believe.
So, yeah.
Who decides? Is it a court? Is it an ancient mystery?
Who decides whether they're approved for it? Federal Labor and Industry. There's a petition filed with the Federal Department of Labor and Industry. They'll do an investigation, contact the companies, the vendors, everyone within that, you know, that knows what's going on there. So, yeah. But I just file the initial application, takes me about 15 minutes, I fax it, and then the feds take over.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I'll go back to my corner now.
We'll wait you when the meeting's over. Great, thanks. Mr. Akenberg. Jeff Akenberg is here from Penn State Extension. Jeff, I think you have a guest.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good morning. First, I'd just like to start with a few quick new developments with Extension in the county, and then I'll turn it over to our poultry educator, Emily Layman, who will update you on her trip to the Netherlands to continue her poultry studies to benefit us back in this area. First of all, our recently hired agronomy educator, Adriana Marilla Williams, who is based out of our Center County office but has responsibility for Center, Mifflin, and Juniata Counties, is in the midst of putting together a workshop on minor management, soil health, for both Mifflin and Juniata Counties. And she's just finalizing the location for that particular workshop, and then we'll have a date on that. And then she is also working with our plant disease clinic that's located on campus to come up with some more drop-off locations for samples in this area so that the farmers in Mifflin, Juniata County wouldn't have to drive up to campus to drop off their samples to get analyzed. So we're trying to make things more convenient for the farmers in this area. So those are two things that she's currently working on for this area. And we have a new horticulture educator who accepted the offer from Penn State Extension, and she will start September 4th, and she will be based out of our Juniata County office, but then she'll have responsibility for Mifflin County also and Center County. But she will be a great asset as far as especially working with our master gardeners, so she'll have responsibility for commercial horticulture and consumer horticulture. So she will start September 4th. And then also, we do have a person who recently left, Michael Ryan, who's our business consultant for Small Business Development Center, accepted a position as a business operations manager. He'll be based out of Center County, so he'll no longer be in this area. And they're currently searching for candidates to replace Michael and hope to have that position filled before the end of September to be based in Mifflin County. So I wanted to provide you some of those new updates, new happenings with Extension in the area, and then I'd like to turn it over to Emily.
My name's Emily Layman. I'm the poultry educator, serving a statewide team, but specifically Mifflin and Juniata Counties. Also work quite a bit in Snyder Union and Northumberland Counties with the growing poultry industry in that area. Recently, I guess the end of May, over Memorial Day weekend, I attended a conference at Boggeningen University, which Jeff always says sounds like the Swedish chef.
Could you say that again?
Boggeningen. It's a premier industry research institution that focuses mostly on animal welfare, but other animal sciences as well. So I attended this hatchery course. We talked about incubation biology and really delved kind of deep into what a chick needs in a hatchery and what it, as our industry is shifting more towards artificial incubation instead of natural incubation, what we're doing to affect chick growth and producing more chicks to feed the world. So we delved really deep into the biology as well as the physics behind what our hatchery equipment is using, and then talked a lot about some animal welfare issues and early feeding with chicks. So if you're familiar with Bell and Evans in Lebanon County, they just put up a huge new hatchery that's all early feeding, based on let's get chicks feed immediately, get them water, and get them off to a good start. So there's a lot of new research. That's one of our growing fields in the poultry industry. So we talked a lot about that, and that there's not quite a lot of information available, but the research that can come from that. So how that's going to affect Mifflin County? I continue to do hatchery diagnostics and work a lot with pedigree chicks over in Snyder County. They're growing their industry into Mifflin County, putting up more chicken houses and finding people who can source birds for them. As well as, I'm planning on developing a hatchery course that will happen every two years that's very similar to the course I took in the Netherlands, but will be sponsored by Penn State and Boggeningen as a partnership. So I have a meeting with them next week to talk about some opportunities that we can kind of collaborate with that and bring some people over from the Netherlands to share their expertise and talk a little bit more about how the US can start pioneering this early feeding. And since we already have hatcheries in the US that are starting that kind of technology, how we can improve that and build our industry on the animal welfare side of things, because hatcheries and animal welfare are two things that really don't go quite together. But we're trying to improve that for the industry and consumers.
It seems, I guess anecdotally, it seems like the industry is getting bigger.
Yes.
So is that true? I haven't seen numbers, but it seems like it is.
Yeah, the poultry industry, the players are, I guess, diminishing, but the major players are getting bigger. And so we always say we need to feed nine billion people by 2050, and poultry is the easy way to do that with no religious or trade barrier restrictions. So chicken's the way to go. Eat more chicken.
What about turkey?
Turkey too, yeah. Everybody eat turkey. Actually, Juniata County, I just come off two weeks of fair, and I got some kids down there really excited about raising turkeys. So they want to do turkey showmanship next year in Juniata, and I'm trying to convince our Mifflin County leaders to do that as well. But basically, the same way you show a pig with a cane and you walk a pig around the ring, they're gonna walk turkeys around the ring. So the kids are really excited about that. Hopefully, we can sell those turkeys, and then you have Thanksgiving dinner in your freezer.
Interesting.
Yeah.
But you're not getting to Goose Day, do you?
I try. I try really hard to get into Goose Day. It's just apparently it's a little bit harder for me to break into that market.
I have to get you into the geese.
Yeah. If I could just have chickens of my own, I just bought a house in Yager Town, so I'm ready to have chickens of my own, but I can't, so.
Chicken zoning.
Yeah. Well, for me, it's fine with security restrictions, but I can't have them for my job. I play with other people's chickens instead. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's get on to our other items. There's a request for exoneration of 2018 County Real Estate Tax Bill, relieve the tax collector from dairy township from collecting this tax. This was a bill in error. I have a motion to approve that, please.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. There's also a request for exoneration of 2017 County Supplemental Real Estate Tax Bill, relieve the tax collector in Decatur Township for collecting this bill. Parcel was purged. We do, in collaboration with them, yes.
Okay, we okay? Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to accept Resolution Number 8 of 2018.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Guess not. Motion passes. We have Resolution Number 8 of 2018, authorizing the chair, which will be Commissioner Kodish when he returns, to sign the Highway Safety Patrol Grant for sobriety checkpoints and expanded DUI underage drinking enforcement. Do we have anybody here to present that?
Yeah, it's money for overtime for local police officers to do stationary sobriety checkpoints and also mobile roving, air-driving patrols.
Okay, and those are selected by the force, I assume? I mean, by the, either state police or...
Well, it's just local police. State police get their own separate money for that, yeah. Yeah, this just involves local police.
Okay. And the local police select the sites, don't they?
We do, in collaboration with them, yes.
Okay, we okay? Any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to accept Resolution Number 8 of 2018.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Guess not. Motion passes. We have Resolution Number 8 of 2018, authorizing the chair, which will be Commissioner Kodish when he returns, to sign the Highway Safety Patrol Grant for sobriety checkpoints and expanded DUI underage drinking enforcement. Do we have anybody here to present that?
Yeah, it's money for overtime for local police officers to do stationary sobriety checkpoints and also mobile roving, air-driving patrols.
Amendment to the Master Consultants Agreement with Delta Development Group to extend the agreement an additional 12 months from July 6, 2018 to July 6, 2019, for $3,000 per month. We currently have an agreement with Delta Development for economic development and community development applications and consulting. We had last year. This is extended for another year. And by the way, that, I think each party could negate that after 30-day notice. So this is an amendment to the Master Consultants Agreement. Motion to accept the amendment.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. There's a letter of understanding between Mifflin County and Geisinger Lewis Town Hospital to provide treatment and services to the inmate population at the Mifflin County Correctional Facility. This is, I believe, just a continuation of an agreement that we have with the hospital. It's short, let me read it. "Mifflin County Correctional Facility is required to provide healthcare equal to those available in the community." It's our responsibility. "Is recognized by this letter of agreement that Geisinger Lewis Town will provide treatment and services during 2018 within the realm of practice and policy to the inmate population of the Mifflin County Correctional Facility. Is also recognized by this letter of agreement that the Correctional Facility will provide payment to Geisinger Lewis Town according to Act 22. Referrals should be made through established policies and procedures. Information regarding inmates shall be shared when it is relevant to the inmate's care and consistent with existing confidentiality statutes and regulations." Motion to approve the letter of understanding, please.
This is renewed annually, isn't it?
I believe this is annually.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. H, Mifflin County State Food Purchase Program Agreements for the fiscal year 2018-2019, which totals $69,838.51. Ms. Fisher, broken down into individual items, here I see?
Correct. This is our annual agreement with the agencies that provide the food services through the Department of Agdolors in our community. We signed the agreement with the state, I think it's the last meeting, and now these are our local providers for the services.
Okay, and there are, let me count, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Right, we have four pantries, or four agencies who provide what we call pantry services, which is a monthly distribution. And then we have another one that actually provides a once-a-month soup kitchen effort. And then we also provide funding for the Abuse Network's food services for the domestic violence shelter portion of their services.
How's this compared to last year's amount?
We actually got about $186 more this year, so nothing substantial, but pretty much base funding over the years for this program. So we do really commend, you know, these pantries that provide the monthly distributions, well, and the other two as well. Certainly, this isn't completely paying for those programs. All of those churches, because they are all churches that provide the pantry distribution, are certainly, you know, subsidizing that. Their complete volunteer efforts on the part of those organizations that, you know, provide the people power to staff it. They're also putting in their own donations to keep those programs afloat. So these certainly help provide more food to be distributed in the community, but it wouldn't meet the need completely. The churches do a lot on their own. Additionally, we utilize the service of Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. It is one of our conditions for receiving the dollars, that the pantries all have to participate in that program, because we're able to get the food at 17 or 18 cents a pound for them to distribute. So it helps stretch those dollars even further.
Any questions? Also from the public? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement for 2018-2019.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Also, there's a Medical Assistance Transportation Program Grant Agreement for 2018-2019 totaling $454,700. Give us some background on that.
Certainly. Again, this is our annual agreement with CARS for the MATP program. We signed the state portion of the agreement at an earlier meeting, and then this is our local agreement for the provision of the services. I'm going to take this opportunity while I'm at the podium just to say we're having some concerns about this program. Our legislature, at the very last bitter moment, put language into the fiscal code that is going to change the way this service is brokered in the state of Pennsylvania. We're very, very concerned about that locally. At the state level, things keep moving towards regionalization. And that is a trend that is going to, in my humble opinion, after many years of service to small rural communities, hurt rural communities tremendously. And so we are watching that. We had a conference call with SECAP last week. They're also watching it as well. And we've certainly been having conversations with regional services locally as to what that will look like. Any regional brokerage system is going to be a concern for us here locally, so...
Have you reached out to our representatives and state senator?
SECAP is very involved in that on our behalf. We have not done that locally, because we're trusting that they are working. It was a surprise to them also, quite frankly. I mean, it truly was at the midnight hour that it was put. It wasn't even, it was kind of hidden in the fiscal code, so nobody even saw it there. And we were told that a large brokerage approached a legislator who helped get that in, so...
Has it been identified which region, if this does go forward, that we would be put into?
No, this is, this is a complete shock to everyone. Nobody has even, we're sure that large brokerage place that contacted the legislator is well aware of how they would like it to all pan out, but nobody has even been given time to think any of this through in other counties, so...
The regional approach is something that the state seems to be pushing more and more.
They really are pushing.
Across the board, whether it's emergency services, elections, and voting, or whatever. It seems that...
And rural communities will lose.
Thank you for that input.
Absolutely.
I have a motion to approve the grant agreement, please.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Personnel issue, resignation of Kyle Knapp, K-E-N-E-P-P, from Full-Time Corrections Officer, effective August 6, 2018. And the hiring of Part-Time Corrections Officer Jason Hauser and Bruce Sumner, effective August 20th on 2018. Motion to approve those personnel items, please.
So moved.
I will second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And thanks Stephen Gibson and Ryan Poff from MCTV for their services this morning, and thank you all for tuning in. Motion, don't need a motion to adjourn. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.